I call on order the June 6th meeting of the City of New Bern Planning and Zoning Board. Seth, can we get a local officer?
Yes, sir. Brad Jefferson?
Here.
Rusty England?
Here.
Brandon Layton?
Here.
Marty Dunn?
Here.
Pat Doggery? Sunny Aluso?
Yeah.
Kyle Deering?
Here.
And Marshall Ballard?
Here.
Alright, we have four.
Alright. Thank you Seth. So, item number two, new business. A, Stars and Stripes 4F LLC has requested consideration of an application to rezonate two parcels of land totaling approximately 20 acres from R10A residential to R8 residential. Parcels are located on the east side of Washington Post Road at its intersection with Olivia Road. Seth, you have a staff report for this.
Yes, sir. So, again, the property is 20.44 acres. The area will do, the property is here adjacent to the Lake Tyler residential development, it's part of the original development. Currently, these parcels aren't vacant. City of New Bern services are available. Elizabeth Avenue Fire Station will respond. There's no environmental issues on this property. You have blue line screens, the work flood zone. See, the zoning map here, the property is in R10A. You can see the existing neighborhood in the area. So, currently, it's in R10A, which is 10,000 square foot, minimalized size, designed to accommodate single-family, two-family, multifamily dwellings. But 10,000 square foot lots required for single-family homes and an additional 5,000 square feet required for an additional use. For multifamily, you can have a density of 8.5 units per acre based on a five basic trend. R8 is very similar, except you've got 8,000 square foot lots and 4,000 square feet for your additional unit, which for multifamily can give you a slightly higher density of 10.6 units per acre, again, based on five different areas. So, the 2022 land use plan update shows this property in the NC-43 focus area. The 2010 regional land use plan lists this area as urban transition. Shows this property is poised for future growth. These areas also serve as open world and open spaces. So, the 20.44 acres can be viewed as an expansion of residential development within a growing area. Proposed rezoning from R10A to R8 is consistent with the recommendations of the 2022 land use plan update. Proposed rezoning is generally consistent with the character of adjacent land uses and zoning classifications. Staffs found the rezoning application reasonable and in the public interest and consistent with city of land use and transportation plans. Property is located in the NC-43 focus area. The vote change also supports the general funding our community to provide more affordable housing options. Can I take any questions from the board?
Open up discussion to board?
Also, you have representatives of the application that was denied.
Anything you don't want to add?
Good evening, members of board. My name's Eric Remington, and I'm an attorney of Florida Smith here in town. I've got with me tonight William Miller. She's representative of Sergeant Trent's 4F LLC, the owner of the property. Got Seth Naun, who is with, I'm sorry, with St. Borck, which is one of the engineering firms that we use at John Thomas, he's with Thomas Engineering. And, you know, Seth, I think summed it up nicely, asking for a change in designation from R10A to R8, which, you know, gives a little bit higher density for this, but it's essentially the same uses. And, you know, the plan is that we're going to hopefully get the zoning change to do multifamily on this whole site. And then we'll, this is actually part of a PUD, so we would end up asking for an amendment to the PUD map because it's already had different designations in it. And then, of course, for either R10A or the R8 designation, we have to have a special use permit for the multifamily. So, we would address any kind of questions about the actual site plans and stuff at that stage. But, we really, you know, think that this is consistent with the land use plans, with the zoning ordinances for the city. And we're asking you all to recommend approval of it to the Board of Alderman. And if you have any other questions for, and we do think it's in the public's interest. It's in a great site, great location, convenient to the 43 connector and everything, so people can have great access to Highway 70 into the downtown area. And so, you know, and it's right there with the Lake Tyler community, so be a nice addition to that, but a little bit different, provide attainable housing for individuals instead of having to try to purchase houses. Yes, sir.
So, how many most family units are each of that building?
So, the, I believe that the maximum is around 200 units there. And it would be, so we'd three-story apartment buildings. But it also allows for, you know, they may do townhomes, they may do other things in multifamily housing, but typically that what they're looking for is apartments.
And what's the reason for changing the zoning? Because if you were already planning for it to be multifamily, going from R10A to R8, is it just to increase the density?
It's, that's a big part of it, yes. To make the project feasible and make it more appealing and all for more housing because the need is great here in New Bern. There's the west of New Bern apartment complex that just opened up, it's 96% capacity and has been since it opened up, so there's a need for attainable housing like this, as we allow for more units to be put in there. Yes, sir.
You're going to increase the density with this change? Have they, did anybody look into how it's going to affect fire and police?
That would all be done at the special use permit process hearing, because, of course, we have to go through that process, whether it's R10A or whether it's R8, you have to go through the special use permit process. And as a part of that, they will be looking at the specific site plan, traffic, you know, density, the site plan layout and all that kind of stuff.
The traffic could probably end up with stoplight there.
Well, I understand that, but you're asking for a change. Somewhere along the line, you may, you probably, somebody must have looked at whether or not it's feasible, otherwise you wouldn't be asking.
Yes, I mean, that's, that's one of the reasons that we're doing it, is to make it more economically feasible to do it, and help them there for multifamily. Right now, that property is divided up under the PUD plan. It's part commercial, it's part residential, it's part multifamily. And this would allow that whole area to be developed for multifamily purposes.
Seth, I have two questions. First is, has anybody else in Lake Tyler reached out to the city in concern, any comments on this?
No, sir, but at this point, at this juncture, it doesn't require public notice.
Okay.
Before the hearing, before the Board of Alderman, everybody within 100 feet, every property owner within 100 feet gets that information.
I'm getting spun up as new chair. And then my second question would be, the special use permit, does that come through this board or does that go directly through?
The special use permit goes through the Board of Adjustment. The amendment, the general plan would come through from this board.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, since it's good being helpful, the Board of Adjustment is a quasi judicial body, so there would be notice, anybody who could be substantially impacted by the project would have an opportunity to come and present evidence to be heard at that stage.
Okay.
So, I have a question. So, to Sunny's question, which is fire, police, et cetera, the impact of that, considering all of the residential around it, if we're approving the zoning to be changed to make it more dense, I mean, I think Sunny's question makes sense that somebody should have looked at this to say, if we add all these units in this space, that we have adequate fire, et cetera, police to cover these units, or, you know, it's kind of irresponsible of us to approve the zoning change.
Let me remind you that you're here to decide whether or not this requested change is consistent or inconsistent with adopted plans, which Seth said it is.
Okay.
That's the point that we are at. And as Mr. Remington pointed out, they will have to modify a PUD and have that looked at, and then resubmit that, and then go to the Board of Adjustment for that quasi judicial hearing. So, you're going to get quite a bit of public input on this, just because we dropped the word density. As has been pointed out by staff, there's a need for this type of housing. We would consider this in the planning world to be transitional, going, decreasing the density as we move back from the main road, so that supports this request. So, we're kind of jumping the gun by, while you're being proactive and thinking, well, what about the fire and what about the traffic? There's a separate process to go through for that. Our job tonight, or your job tonight, really, is to decide whether or not adopted plans by the City of New Bern support or not, or whether or not this is in the public interest or not, and if not, why. And then we generate that consistency statement based off of that discussion that you just had. So, those are, there's absolutely processes for that.
Is it considered consideration whether they can fight a fire in the public interest?
Absolutely. But, and as has been pointed out, there is already an adopted plan here, which they'll have to have modified. And that is that point where you go around that table and those agencies weigh in on that, whether they have the truck to sense of the fire and the latter side and often those types of things, yes.
And Mr. Aluso, to your point, I think it's important to remember that you're considering all permissible uses within that classification, for one. And there's some overlap between R10A and the proposed classification. And also, before any perm, building permit can be obtained, the applicant or whoever owns the land at that point would have to go through the big, the rigorous administrative processes that Madam Director just laid out. So, before anybody can move forward with any dreams or imaginings or visionings to actually turn over a shovel, there's going to be those backstops.
It starts here, is what you're saying. So, if we change the zoning, we've lost all control of what's going to happen?
No, sir.
Well, so, if you recall, Sunny, in previous discussions where this has come up, we've had the, it's, that's been brought up through the departmental review process, where we've seen a comment from fire or from another. And so, that occurs after rezoning, right? So, that's the review of the general, or the amendment of the general plan, the PUD, that comes back to us, it will have a department review as part of that.
I guess what I'm saying is that, what's the point of rezoning if we don't know if they can build, if they can do what they want to do, if it's going to be safe?
Well, so, you have to think about it like this. While that allows a greater density, that doesn't mean that that's the density that will ultimately be, uh...
Well, I think, come on, I mean, let's not be naive. If you're going to be able to build more houses and get more money, we're not, they're not going to say cheap, it's, I don't want to do that.
Well, they're not. Correct. The developers may not say that, but the department review and that process may deem that they can't, you know, the density is not supported. So, I think that process is in place, and we have to let staff and city departments do what they do, and then provide that information to us at the general plan to review it and determine if we agree or not.
Real quick, you made a statement, even by the, the purpose of this board. Could you refresh, just as new chair, what is, what is the purpose of what we...
Sure. You have been asked, you've been requested by the public to review a rezoning request and to make a recommendation. And as part of that, you know, for the last few years, we've had a sign, those consistency statements. And so, you are basing your recommendation on two things. They changed it a little bit, was this reasonable and is this consistent? It could be inconsistent and unreasonable, you can still recommend it, just give some reasons, so that's how, that's how we draft this. So, we've got kind of two land use plans in the City of New Bern, right? Because we've got that original 2010 land use plan, which supports this, right? So, we're pointing that out as consistent. And then you had an update to the plan you adopted, which is separate but together with that other plan, for whatever reason, it was done like that here. Both plans do not say that this is inconsistent, that the multifamily housing, which we're focusing in that, because it was mentioned, although we probably should have said, well, let's look at that whole chart of uses, because technically that change allows, we, you know, they could change, or they could sell it tomorrow, or whatever. So, you decide whether or not, you kind of agree with what Seth pointed out, those two. Could you go back, Seth, to that slide of what the, what the plans say? So, back to the other one, please. We've got our 2020 land use plan update in North Carolina 43 focus area. So, that, there's really nothing in my mind, as staff advising, inconsistent there, so I'd say that's consistent. And then we've got that original plan, it's a, it's a very kind of watered down and vague, but it's a developed, poised for future growth. So, I don't see an inconsistency there. We get to the public interest, right? So, maybe this is, there's something to you all that's completely not in the public interest. We discussed that, and we say, we don't know if this is in the public interest. It's really hard to do that with such a housing shortage, right? And overall, you know, you heard the economics of it mentioned, this, multifamily is already allowed, they're asking for a slight increase in allowable density. I don't know that these two plans say that that, that would be, that request is inconsistent. But you may all feel differently, and that's what you base your recommendation on, and ultimately, that's what I take and present to the Board of Alderman when this goes to public hearing. And there are, there's layers of process further to develop this property, which, once that sign goes up, that this is going to a public hearing for rezoning is the first one, then those letters go out at the same time. And then, should this rezoning get adopted and they elect to present a development that fits with the change to zoning, then that starts that again, because, well, A, it's going to have to come back and be looked at by the, how many people are on, that review those plans when you send them out?
Eight or nine.
Like, nine different departments, agencies, DOT, they all get to look at the plan and weigh in on it. And so, those recommendations are going to get put in and probably recommend, or turned into conditions when it goes to get a special use permit from the Board of Adjustment, which in the City of New Bern is a separate body and operates under different rules. And then, in that case, all those people will get renoticed to weigh in on a specific development, if that makes sense. So, really, right now, what we're looking at is, is this consistent with our plans and is it reasonable? And that's what we base the recommendation on at this board.
The question I have, will they be leaving the community, or they require community to the community to be...
No, sir. Not for a rezoning, no.
I didn't get answered yet.
Not for a rezoning request, no.
The community will have an opportunity to participate in the public hearing for the Board of Alderman.
Yeah, we just recommended that. More discussion? Let's play the board.
I make the motion to a second, to make the recommendations as to the next area.
Okay. We have a second. We have a second. Any other discussion? Any none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion care. Item number two B.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on to two B, there is a consistency statement before you.
Yes.
And if you want to entertain a motion to adopt a statement of consistency, that would be reported at this time.
Okay. I'm going to entertain a motion to adopt the statement of consistency. I'll make a motion if we adopt the statement of consistency. Okay, I'll say it. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
What is a motion of consistency? That might help.
Our, the state statutes require that we acknowledge separately that we have consulted our adopted plans, which we have, we just looked at them on the screen. And it is just, even if it's inconsistent, it's still a statement of consistency. And we are, it just acknowledges that we've got these adopted plans and we looked at them before making this recommendation. Anything else, Ron, did I...
Any further discussion? Any none? All those in favor say aye. 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 All opposed? Okay. Moving on to two B. Jason Sanderson has requested consideration of an application to rezonate one parcel of land totaling approximately 1 acre from R10 residential to C4 Neighborhood Business District. Parcels located on the north side of Oaks Road near its intersection with North First Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Your statement?
Yes, sir. I'll give my presentation, and then I'll turn it over to you. So, again, we've got this property located on the north side of Oaks Road. This is a... City of New Bern Water Service, Electric Service, and the City Fire Service Station for the Bronx. While there's no blue line screens associated with this property, it is in 100 year flood plan, so any, any new construction would have to be built inherent to those codes and all of these. The zoning map here considers wide range of zoning districts in the immediate area. So, the R10 Neighborhood District, again, is the 10,000 square foot lots designed to accommodate single-family and two-family dwellings. Additional 5,000 square feet is required for any additional use. For C4 additional, minimalized size, it would be 5,000 square feet. The district is established where the principal use of land is to provide for the retail of goods or services to the nearby residential neighborhoods. Regulations of this district are designed to limit the business district, which would be established in there to protect the building with eventual injuries. The 2010 land use plan lists this area as developed, the classification arrived, continue intensive development and redevelopment of the municipality and region. Similarly, the 2022 land use plan also has this area listed as developed. To find that classification only in it is, has been developed or in an area that is generally built out with development and growth in this area, which likely require development of existing properties, redevelopment of existing properties. This property is not located in one of the three different areas. Proposed rezoning from R10 to C4 is consistent with the recommendations under the 2022 land use plan update. Proposed rezoning is generally consistent with the character of adjacent land uses and zoning classifications. Staff found the proposed rezoning being in the public interest and consistent with city of land use plan. Want to add, any proposed changes of use within this property will require site plan review process. Any new businesses will be required to meet all the current defined standards such as screening, parking, traffic control, et cetera, which is part of a site plan review process. So, we have the applicant, we have Mr. Sanderson.
So, I represent my client, it's a local gentleman. It's going to be, want to change it to a funeral home, it's already a church now. Really, being nothing different, he kind of uses his business for ministry, pretty much. I asked him cremations versus casket funerals, it's about 65% cremations versus about 35% casket funerals these days. A lot of, a lot of people are just doing smaller funerals, and he's got accommodations and relationships with bigger churches, with bigger venues. So, when they have a, sit down with a family, they ask questions, you know, specific questions about how, how much accommodation you need, do you have a lot of family coming in, and so on. So, they kind of gauge that questioning based on if he needs to research it or a venue larger church in the area that he has relationships with. So, he was going to put up a nice white final privacy fence, do whatever the City of New Bern says, we're going to have to do, and it will be definitely a good neighborhood. The quality is fine, it's fine, for sure. Some of you probably know about Kent, disclosing. There's a church here across the street now, I think they just built another building out front. I don't know if there's any relationship that can be built that if there is a larger crowd, that they could use that parking space, you know, across the street. When we walk the land behind the church, I mean, there's a lot of parking back and around the church, so obviously, we'll do a site plan and stuff like that, so... And the church owned that, they just sold that house there to a lady, we were trying to buy that as well, but we were just a little too far behind to develop the whole section there. That will accommodate for his needs for starting a funeral business, and he was going to do a rehab on the church, you know, repaint the bricks, some new windows, add a bathroom, handicap, you know, new car, or something like that, and be a taxpaying property at that time, you know, obviously, which is good for the City of New Bern, because the city's got deals. Any questions that anybody might have? He's not going to do any cremations on site, he says the body's off the gold bowl, maybe he will cremation, maybe shit that. So...
It's just going to record that would be a completely separate use, that would have happened.
Well, Seth?
Yeah.
That's what I was saying.
Not included.
Yeah. So, in your staff report, there's a list of, a table that lists all the C4 uses, so that's really what we need to be considering, not to refocus again, but we always appreciate plans being shared, but when we change the zoning, we're not just allowing his plans, we're allowing anybody else's plans or anything allowed in C4, so...
Those plans could change.
That's right.
Yeah. I think it was Paul Best that closed down. I don't know, there's, you know, with them being gone, too, is putting some burdens on some of the other funeral hangings in the area as well. Just be good for the community, I think.
So, the other, C3, that's the other business that we have, like the Sawyers Body Shop?
Yeah, there's a Sawyers Paint and Body, I'm not sure if they're in this section or not here, yeah.
This one is a company that does safety netting for like paint parks, amusement parks, that kind of thing.
Is that the Moore's Fire Shop, I think? Yeah, I just do the Moore's Fire Shop, they work.
So, when you're considering if some things are reasonable, just to refocus again, we look and look at what's around already, that's a good, good place to hang your hat on reasonableness. So, it looks like there's C3, which allows even more than C4 out there, when you look, there's a little bit of everything, so I don't personally feel like this would be unreasonable when you're looking at, well, we've kind of got a bunch of colors up there right now. Including industrial, yes, there's a bunch of purple up there, too, which is more intense than what he was asking for.
Yeah, the building's real, will stay the same, not much change besides any look out, you know, new painting, new windows, and stuff like that, so it'd be more attractive as people roam by, stuff like that.
One question. Do we, in terms of approving motion, do I do it right the first time, do we approve a motion and then we do a second one?
You start, we can do it that way, so there's nothing wrong.
So, or would it be beneficial to just do the second motion instead of the last time, one time? Which is...
We can do it either way, I think, since people were accustomed, we did it one way the first time, we can just stick with this.
Okay. Well, there's play to the board.
I'll make the motion, we approve this request for rezoning to the Board of Alderman.
Okay. I have a motion.
So, we have a motion and a second, I have one more question.
Okay.
And this is for staff. So, just confirming that C4 does not allow for churches without a special use. R10A allows for churches by right. And so, if the church, if the zoning is approved, the church can't continue to operate without a special...
You just no longer will be a church.
Understood, but...
They'd be giving their right up to operate as a church, absolutely.
That's right. That's, that's what I wanted to be clear, but, I mean, regardless of what the intent is... But, I mean, regardless of what the intent is, it...
My use is...
Okay, that's my question I wanted to confirm.
Great question.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
I just can entertain the motion to adopt the statement of consistency.
Yes. I will now entertain a motion to adopt the statement of consistency.
I move.
Motion, aye or no? Same second. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
So is that going to be something that's required every time we do one of these?
Yes, ma'am.
And when did that start?
When Chapter 160B became effective? Actually, in 2006.
We were not doing it...
Now it's a part of our code of ordinance that says, put it on your radar and integrate with the consistency.
Just forward, go on to see. Maybe we do just one going forward. But we'll talk about that.
Nick, if you prefer to do it in one motion, we'll package it for the subsequent ones in one motion. That's fine. But just for consistency today, like she said, for these three, we'll do two vote.
Moving on to item two C. Initial zoning of previous annexed parcels. Thank you, Mr. Kim. We've talked about this a few times in the past. Got more detail in this one. Staff attorney, there's parcels land within our jurisdiction at heart. Did not receive their initial zoning at the annexation. It was 29, to be exact. The owners were notified by mail in May. Asked if they would like to, free to invite them to come and attend today. Three areas of concentration, western NC 55 highway around the airport and Highway 70, Jason McKenna College. The first area here is the NC 55 highway. A little FYI, folks, about how the zoning network, any of these areas that are not affected or still inside the county or outside the city jurisdiction, including this one here, these properties are all annexed every time versus one blanket annexation that covers the whole area. So that's how you can end up with those little spots that are still counting. We've got the four parcels that we just looked at. Stat opposing R10 residential for our fourth helpful lots. This district is designed to accommodate low density, single family dwellings with 20,000 square foot minimum size, which allows you to build site-built homes and manufactured homes. So the next area that we're looking at is adjacent to the airport. We've got 14 unzoned properties here, to be exact. Relegating A5 for the properties that are currently in agricultural use, other seven of those parcels. This one here, several of these are here. I-1 is being recommended for property owned by the Craven County, Craven County, which is adjacent to the airport. This was also a fair request. That's this parcel here, it's right adjacent to the runways. I-1 allows airport by rights, which is what they were wanting. If they ever expand, they won't have to go through any additional processes. Now, we've got a few residential districts that are recommended to complement the existing residential uses along Bryce Creek, right in there in drive. We've got two. There's one larger one here, the same property owner as agricultural properties. And then there's this one over here on the waterfront. That's why I recommended R10A just to be cohesive with the existing, with the existing area.
The one you're talking about across the creek, we're recommending A5?
Yes, A5, yes. This is an existing marsh island. It's not going to be developed, so that's appropriate. Thank you.
Can we get a little bit more detail on what it exactly is in A5?
Absolutely. So the primary use is agriculture.
Right.
If you want to do single family lots, they've got to be a minimum of five acres. But it does allow residential uses such as duplex, home family, especially, a few other uses like homes for the handicap, childcare homes, manufacturer homes, but class A, class B, so that'd be multiple, double, I have a single one.
So also, why don't you speak to the fact that that's what the owner wanted?
Yes. And we have a representative of the owner here, Tony Daniel Stink, who is not representing.
I'm happy to address the owner's desires. Many of these properties are owned by the Arthur family. They are Arthur Farms sign. You can see it on Bryce Creek, Bryce Creek Road if you're heading towards Jacksonville. They have used this property for farming purposes. You see their cows, you see their hay, you see their farm equipment out there anytime you drive through. And they have no plans to change that. Current member of the family that farms most of this property is very young in farmer's career spans, and so he doesn't have any intent to change it. If you recall, this property was brought into the city limits, not by, really by their choice, but as an accommodation to assist the city with bringing Carolina colors into the city limits as well. And so really, from the Arthur's perspective, we just want, they just want the property. They want to be able to use the property. They wait to use it for years and years and years. They don't want that to change.
So even with the residential uses that you were talking about, the minimum life size is five acres?
No, no, eight, with A5 it is. With the R10, it'd be 10...
Oh, with R10, that's...
Another one, the Arthur family members owns this piece here, and he intends to cut it up into pieces to give to his grandchildren. And so that's why they don't have any long-term interest in agriculture on this particular area. They would like to have a residential district that allows to be home site sized lots to be cut up. That's why I recommended R10, A5 for this versus another agricultural. Again, that's at the request of the property.
So I'm trying to get a view based on this, along with this, and what that one piece that he's referring, hoping to get R10, you said, to cut up, that I'm assuming is a 7-1 or 3-011?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And that's preferred on here, correct?
Yes, ma'am. All the ones in the brown at the, toward the top are all those.
The airport.
All those.
Okay, I see what you're talking about. Okay, gotcha.
We'll move on down to the Carolina Colors area. So the last area that we've got here is five altogether, four directly adjacent to Carolina Colors Development. Some of them actually owned by Carolina Colors. The fifth over here is owned by the federal government. It's a sort of a wooded marsh type area. It's not suitable for development at all. Recommended A5 for that in conjunction. This area is A5, it's the same type of property, it's just a wet forested property. For the four that are in the immediate vicinity of Waterscape Way and Carolina Colors, we've recommended C3. That's also at the request of Kit Perry, who had called me on behalf of Carolina Colors and requested C3 for those as well. We've got some questions on this section. Okay. So again, we notified the property owner on May 11th, 2023, to this process. They initiated, invited us to contact, asked after any questions. We've not received any negative feedback. Again, each parcel is evaluated by the existing use, occupancy ability, and adjacent building districts, and then input from the property or from there to determine further. So if it were a pleasure of the board, we can take, we could recommend a motion to forward these staff recommendations on to the Board of Alden.
So we can...
I'm moved. I recommend it.
Absolutely. As we were...
I'll get you the consistent...
Yep, that was my next question. I presume we need one of those from us as well for the initial zoning.
So I have a motion. I have a motion from Sunny to recommend all of these to... To Board of Alden. We have a second.
I have a question.
Okay.
Near the airport, the lot that the family would like to give to the grandchildren is split into pieces. Does that create any issues because it's next to the Craven County piece, which is next to the airport?
The only, the only potential, I guess at some point down the line, it'd be who develops first. Our height limits, for example, our height limits are more restrictive than the airport's height limits.
Sure.
I think ours are 45 feet. I talked to the county about this, and theirs are 150 feet, something like that.
Well, I realize there's a piece across that road. There's R10A that it butts up next to that on the north end, I guess that's the north of the property. I understand that. I was just asking the question, just, that'd be the only thing to consider.
I think if it was a larger piece and we're going to do like a traditional subdivision, the airport would probably weigh in on that and not be in favor because they don't typically like to see subdivisions, at least in the other airports I've worked with. They make those comments. They, it just generates more people complaining about airport noise and things. But in a case like this where it's more family, it's a subdivision, but it's not, you know, a 500 lot subdivision, a family subdivision, you're just creating these more rural type lots. I don't see the airport having any kind of problem generated by that at all.
Any more discussion on this item? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Or if you pass. And I'd like to, I'll entertain a motion for consistency.
So move.
Second motion for consistency, and I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item number D, discussion item downtown parking. Is that clear? Is that beautiful downtown? So the block is items of pretty big. Parking minimums can inhibit the variety of uses possible on a parcel. By that, I mean with every use in the table of uses, that's got a code along it, and that corresponds with the parking requirements. Restaurant's got to have X number of parking spaces per, in this case, 100 square feet per restaurant without door dining. Few of them saw earlier, which is a parking space for every 75 square feet. All these things go into, what can be allowed on a property. So when you have existing downtown, especially historic downtown, where lots are not very good to begin with, when you have new businesses wanting to come in, adapt to reuse, you know, change of use is most common, what's going to be, what can go in here or what can not go in there is going to be dictated on. Can they, can they provide off-street parking? And we do allow for satellite parking, but they're so, it's so scarce, I haven't seen one of those look out yet. We did contact several cities in North Carolina to see who else has done away with minimum required off-street parking, including West DC, Fort E, Riley, Asheville, Greenville, Huntington, and Fort Washington, town area. Some of the possible considerations, talking points for the board that expand the existing parking exempt area boundary, we'll look at in a second. Special use permit required for eliminating existing parking spaces. When you have a, parking is at a minimum or at a high value, you don't necessarily want a property owner with 200 parking spaces to sell it to a hotel, but you know, if you make a parking exempt, the bull does the whole thing, all of a sudden, you've lost a lot of the parking spaces that you did have. That's where the idea is with the special use permit. Difference between New Bern and other cities, how do other cities regulate parking in their downtown? And also, in consideration about accommodation for overnight lodging, if you get to expand the parking exempt area, maybe some things like specialty or short-term rentals, et cetera, might need to still have a parking requirement. This is our existing downtown retail core. This is the area that is parking exempt right now with no off-street parking requirements. One option the staff has considered is to expand this area, Front Street on both sides. We've got East Front Street and then South Front Street. But it's all up for debate, sir. Anybody that has any comments?
So my initial thought, looking at this, is what is the thought process behind not including the east side of East Front Street? That's where the hotel is, that's where, there are some condos, apartments there, and the galley store. So my only thought there was, it makes sense to me to include those in that, particularly if we have, if we, if it's ultimately decided to have a special use permit to eliminate existing parking. I think that would make that area more conducive to what I would consider, or what the board might consider good development. As it is, if we, if it is, if you proceed and say, okay, those parcels are large enough to support onsite parking, so we don't include them in the, that essentially precludes any sort of subdivision or development on a smaller scale, simply because you haven't included them in the, you know, the central business core or the central retail core, and allow for the reduction of parking requirements.
So I'll say this, Seth, if you don't mind, I'll take this first. Okay. Anytime we make a change, we want to have an intent, and the intent behind us bringing this to you is the problem of being able to issue a zoning permit for existing buildings and reusing them and preserving that character. When I see large undeveloped parcels, and that's, and that's what they are, and those are marketable and they're on the water, we called out overnight lodging a little bit separately because I don't think it's good practice to personally allow for a use like that and not have designated parking spaces. And that would stand for new development or existing development, whether that's existing use or an existing building. But we are, we started this conversation to focus on how can we facilitate the reuse of what we've got down there and legally issue zoning permits without every one of these businesses having to go ask for a variance for parking to the Board of Adjustment? Because if we start enforcing the parking standards as I believe they should be enforced, I think we would be overloading the Board of Adjustment every time somebody was trying to open a business because they wouldn't be able to meet the parking requirements. So keep that in the forefront as we talk through some of these things, I think.
So then, yes, these businesses that are there now, when they decided to open this business, they were not given so many parking spots.
Can you speak to that?
Like the business, if you have down there, where you like the Gold Bear Lot or the Red Bear Lot, that you've got highlighted on here, when they were given that business, they weren't given so many parking spots?
The Bear Lots are existing city parking lots.
Okay.
But there are businesses that have come in downtown and have repurposed some of the structures there where parking requirements have not been enforced even-handedly.
Okay, so they're, they're not told they have so many parking spots?
And I will say to amend that statement, very often when someone comes into an existing structure... structure, they don't notify staff that they've changed their use. So oftentimes, you'll see a business in a structure that was existing, the use has changed, staff was not notified. So you have a business that's already in operation, that's already doing its thing, and now we come in after the fact to try to enforce parking, and that becomes uncomfortable. So I think what staff is bringing to you are some of those circumstances require a global solution so that we can have sustainable growth across our downtown.
Well, Seth, thank you.
I'll add to that. I reached out today to Swiss Fair, the Downtown Development Authority, and I was told that I could quote her as saying that she is in favor of removing all parking restrictions downtown, such that the restrictions, many cities are doing this now, they're getting rid of their parking areas, and so they're looking to, when someone comes in, they want to develop these and have, not have that part normal. Something else you want me to say?
So that's just...
Existing parking spaces within the cross hatch area, do those have to be preserved?
That's a different question.
So that's why we were gonna get to a conversation on if you eliminate parking that already exists, how should we handle that? Because we have had a situation recently where business owner had some parking, they, without staff's previous approval, created an outside patio, it removed parking spaces that did exist, and the neighbors are going bonkers, and I, and I get that. Well, now these people aren't parking there, and they, were they allowed to do this? And we don't have anything right now that says, well, we didn't issue them a permit that says you've got to have this many parking spaces, or that said, you don't need these parking spaces. But because in this area, and if we potentially expand the area, because I think expanding it is something that perhaps, if it's allowed in the yellow, that we should have the same rights for very similarly developed property down there, we just need to have a better, more legally sound way to say yes or no that they have these parking spaces. There are, the public parking space, there's about 600 parking spaces down there between the street parking and the public parking spaces. Nobody's assigned those, they belong to everyone to use. So you can't accommodate the public parking spaces in your calculation if we were to apply this area like we would a new target across town somewhere, let's say. So, so there's that. What we're interested in having a conversation is, do you think it's appropriate, because we are treating this as a little special, differently, as a kind of an overlay, to say if you'd like to get rid of those parking spaces to expand your business, there needs to be a check and balance on that? And that, that may be, the easiest solution in my head is to say, we don't wanna say yes or no, this is a case-by-case thing because this whole district is a case-by-case thing. Let the Board of Adjustment decide your case based on the special use criteria. Yes, we feel like it's okay for you to lose those three spaces that you've always had to use, or maybe they say, no, no, we're not, we're not gonna approve that. But staff should not be deciding that arbitrarily.
Right. And to me, the bigger issue is, the issues that I see with this is, the majority of the red cross hatch area, cross hatch area, at least on the right-hand side, is so mixed business and residential.
Yeah.
There's a lot more residential there. And so businesses who already have parking spaces start eliminating them, and that affects the residents in that area. The other problem you have is, is that you're surrounded on two sides by water, and you're going to the edge, so where do those people go when they wanna park? They're gonna go up and over, and you're gonna have more and more people unless the city of New Bern puts more public parking in place. If you're gonna eliminate parking spaces, you better put public parking in place so that it doesn't affect the residential neighborhoods.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, just to be helpful, yes, sir.
You go ahead, I'll add that.
Several years ago, Development Services Staff did a parking study and actually inventoried every public parking space in the downtown. And I think Madam Director indicated previously that there are about 600 public parking spaces downtown. I'm not sure if the data, and I'm not statistician, but I'm not sure the data supports a lack of downtown public parking versus an overutilization of existing downtown.
So I was on the parking committee. From Hancock to the river, from Broad Street to the river, there are over 3,000 parking spaces.
Yes, but the majority of those parking spaces are paid parking spaces. They're not all, they're, I've heard this from a number of business people downtown, they all say there's over 3,000 parking spaces in New Bern, we don't need more parking. That, the majority of those parking spaces are leased, they're not for public parking. And when we get a whole lot of people downtown, they have nowhere to park.
Well, the leased lots, if you're referring to the ones next to Morton's, that is, are they changing that in the ones by the tax office?
Doesn't all do these ones, I think.
No, all behind the Omar's building, all of those.
Well, Omar Stone is private property.
That's private, right.
But still, if it's private property or public property, it doesn't matter. The issue is, that gets included in this 3,000 parking spaces number, and the problem is, you can't park there unless you lease the space monthly. So it, to me, it's misleading to say that there's 3,000 parking, over 3,000 parking spaces in New Bern, because not all the people that come to New Bern can park there.
Well, the problem is with 3,000 parking spaces, you're, you're hurting businesses' abilities to expand in some of those areas. Because there are certain areas, and B and Bs and others, that want to expand or perhaps want to do something different. Because they're parking there.
In fact, people like the Benjamin Ellis House, or people like that are advocating that we make all of downtown a pedestrian area. But there is no driving, there is no parking. They're not being affected by lack of parking spaces, they want to eliminate them. And what happens then? People go out to the neighborhoods and park. So now you're gonna have, I have the situation in California, the city that I live in in California, and the issue becomes, then you get a bunch of residents in these other areas applying that their street should be permit parking because they can't park outside their own homes. And now you've created this zone that's permit parking plus all this other parking that you can't use, and spaces get, get eliminated, and then you don't have anywhere for people to park when they come to New Bern. So the city has to address it, in my opinion, to establish parking areas for people that visit New Bern, more than the, than what's there.
Would I agree with your objection.
I think you all are noticing the tension here with this issue, that there are a lot of different types of uses, a lot of different types of interests, a lot of different types of stakeholders that have to be addressed. And it's not an easy answer, not an easy conversation to have. I think for purposes of moving the conversation forward, the first question for you all to answer is, is there a need to expand the existing downtown retail business core? That's question one. We don't get to any other considerations unless a majority of you all agree that that exemption zone should be larger. So I'm interested, and I think staff is interested, to hear what your thoughts are on at least that question.
Do we have a sense as to how many businesses have applied to change the use or change their properties such that they have to request a variance for the parking? Is that every time that they, that a business changes? Like you said before, sometimes businesses get sold or whatever, and then the use changes, but staff isn't notified because it falls within the existing zone, I would imagine. Is that accurate?
I answer, I feel phone calls on a regular basis, where people say, hey, you know, we wanna market this property, what can we, if we're doing it? If it is gonna be a change of use, I'll just let them know what the parking requirement would be. Maybe they can do it, maybe they, maybe they can't. A lot of the, you know, a lot of businesses have consultants that do research and realize before they even have a conversation.
That's a tough problem.
Well, it's like, you know, the old Alex Temple building, or the Alex Building.
Yeah, that's parking exempt, but they, they brought that farce behind it because they knew they wanted parking for their customers. And that's why actually some cities, like Riley, for example, they have parking maximas. They, they want as much of the properties, as much of the land area to be developed for businesses and services, they, they know that some retail, or some businesses are gonna want to provide a large-scale parking lot, and that's why they actually have maximums so that you can't use it so much towards parking. Now, I think maybe their public parking inventory might be different.
So the yellow zone, if I recall correctly, has already had the status, and you're asking, should we expand it?
Yes, ma'am, that's one consideration for this board.
And I'm not in favor of extending it.
Downtown is already so inaccessible, I mean, it wasn't designed for cars to begin with, we'll throw that out there, obviously, so.
Giddy upholstery.
Right. That's why we're here, talking about this, yeah.
But, to make a point, and this coming from a personal side, you know, individuals with mobility disabilities already struggle, they're tonning downtown. There's a lack of just basic, you know, the old brick sidewalks are, they come up, you know, constantly, you know, they catch my wife's wheelchair tire and stuff like that. There is a lack of handicap parking. I've actually almost been cited for parking illegally just to accommodate my wife's rent and wheelchair. And so this is where, if we do put this in there, then I believe the city needs to come in with these public parking spaces that are along the streets and make them more accessible because that's, that's gonna be a big issue. I mean, you know, on the car series, it says everything comes together here, but on the, on the city vehicles, but, you know, if everything's coming together, then everybody needs to be able to come together and actually be able to enjoy downtown for all it's worth. And not adding the adequate parking, you know, those in specifically manual wheelchairs are going to have a significant issue finding parking spots, getting to the businesses they want to, and just being able to enjoy, you know, all the festivities that go on throughout the year. There's really not a good resolution for the parking situation. I mean, you're not gonna make everybody happy whether you find some land to put up, I don't know, like a three-story parking garage. People aren't gonna be happy about that, obviously, especially those that have lived here their entire lives. But, I don't know, I just wanted to throw it out there that for those with disabilities, it's not accessible at all. This one just, I think this one just hurt even more.
I mean, I totally understand if businesses wanna move into these areas and, you know, they call staff, and staff tells you, wait, then you don't have the parking spaces there to be able, to be able to do that. You know, obviously, you don't wanna restrict business, but by the same token, I'm just not so sure that, I just feel like the city needs to address the parking issue a little bit more before we just include that area as being exempt. And certainly, I, I would be in favor if you did that, I'm not necessarily in favor of it today, but if you did that, if they wanted to eliminate any parking spaces on that property, it would have to be approved, but they couldn't just...
So, is there just for direction, for, we knew, we're just trying to start this conversation, it's gonna take us a while to work through it. General consensus, we want to find an alternative way to accommodate parking better than expanding the district, is that what I'm hearing? Can we, like, if it was a vote today, we, we like expanding or not, we, who's saying no, who's saying yes?
I'm a no.
I'm a no.
Okay.
I'm a yes.
I'm a yes. Yes or no?
What'd you think, Marshall?
No pressure. Yeah.
It's not a real vote.
It's a poll, not a vote. So I hear, I hear good points on both sides, the simplest way was to do this, was the way we, we kinda started here.
Well, since I have this board...
Yes.
Have, have you all thought about installing meters?
That's outside of the purview of our decisions here, I think.
Yeah, but it could be plenty parking on the streets, we'll put meters.
That doesn't, that doesn't change the availability or invasibility of parking, that's the problem. It certainly would bring more revenue to the city.
Bring more revenue.
But it, but it doesn't change the amount of parking spaces, that's the issue.
I think this is a long and big and political discussion to be way outside of the purview. I, I, you know, I don't need to offend anybody here, but I don't like having this conversation here. I don't know that there's enough people that know a lot more than those of us sitting on this board about parking issues of downtown. And whether or not we get staff direction as to how to move without hearing from those people, I, I personally feel very uncomfortable with that.
Well, another way to accommodate it is we keep talking through some of the things that would go along with the map, and it, we could take, we used this map for discussion at the Planning and Zoning Board, and it was recommended not to expand the district anyway, I give the vote, and I explain the conversation and the pros and cons on both sides, and we pump that back to the elected officials to discuss. You know, that's, that's part of this. We still have to have the conversation.
Fair enough, so there's a hundred issues, and you're right on a lot of them, and, and...
You think you have a good point, sir. I mean, the businesses have to be accommodated.
It's a, it's a complicated thing that this city has been dealing with for a very long time, as long as I've been here. I mean, I've lived here 35 years my whole life.
One answer doesn't fit off.
It absolutely does not.
No, that's right.
You know, and so, that's where it's, you know, it's way outside of my pay grade as chairman of this board. Yes, me, it's more, Board of Alderman needs to get around that, because there are needs such as his that are absolutely...
Those are wonderful points, I will incorporate it.
And, but at the same time, that business that you talked about, that, that remove those parking spaces, I think I know who you're talking about.
I didn't name names.
I'm not, I'm not saying any more. Absolutely not. But, you know, in my eyes, you know, I've got a business, I got some land back there, I'm using it for parking spaces. You know, as a, just a, as a guy, and that's all I am, so, I, I don't know.
Just to let you know that because our parking regulations are in the land use ordinance, any changes will come back to you all.
Yay.
As a legal procedure.
Right now, you threw some numbers around before, what, 1,000, 100 square feet, blah, blah. What changes would we make? I mean, would we make it like 50 square foot for one car?
Well, we were trying not to get into all those text amendments where each is saying for a special area. Right now, they're technically to be applied.
Because this is exempt, we don't care how big the building is.
Just in the yellow, it's...
Just in the yellow. The yellow, there are no specific parking regulations.
So if we put some kind of a restriction, restriction on it, people will not be able to open up a particular business.
It's narrow.
Well, that's, that's what exists currently.
Yeah, I'm saying.
We have that sort of restriction now.
So now, now I understand why the, the people...
Swiss Fair.
Swiss Fair, I'm interested in not having any...
I can understand why Lynn's in favor of that, true.
But then you can, you're also uncovering some of bed and breakfast businesses, are you not?
Yeah.
And they've already, we've already had that discussion around and around about bed and breakfast.
Which, which was pointed out at the expanded business, perhaps not to include them in the exemption for that, that's been discussed, we understand why we have those.
But that, that would be on...
You could do that with language by excluding particular uses that are parking heavy, but, you know, it's, then you're, then you're potentially redrawing lines all the time, or at least someone's gotta keep track of those uses and what's exempt and what's not. You know, that just gets muddy, in my opinion, and...
Well, and there's actually a business down there on South Front Street that is being built, that my understanding is they changed it from a B and B to a hotel because of the parking restrictions.
They wanted to do a hotel and 5,000 square foot of restaurant.
Right.
They were gonna, the parking requirement was gonna be 50, 60 spaces. They had 11, or they had 17.
So they had to change it. So I understand what you're saying, people are trying to build businesses and bring more revenue into the town, and you think, I get it, but, but we're very limited in the question. It's tough, it's a tough problem.
That's why it's not, it's not for us to decide, you know, it's for the set of people that got elected.
We can, we can...
Well, I guess maybe from my point of view, whether you make the expansion or not, parking count as we stand today doesn't change just by changing this. What it allows a business to do is to occupy a building that is already there, or a parcel that's already there, and start a business without having any parking requirements that may preclude them simply because there's not space there to accommodate parking.
Don't preclude them, you mean having any parking?
Or the, I haven't looked that closely at that. Are the zoning by properties different? Is there a lot of inconsistency in there? I don't know if we can get to a...
The other thing to consider is, parking is not by zoning, parking is by use, that's,